And we're live. So, um, welcome everyone. I am the, I'm Scott Hodenstein, the president of the Democratic Public Education Caucus of Florida. We're going to begin our program here shortly. Once we have a chance to verify that the livestream is up and working and give our wonderful candidates and other people a chance to share the livestream on their Facebook pages. So get, give us one second to make sure that we're up and running. Are we good Stephanie?
Looks like it. Yep.
And Erin and Kim, just give me a nod. Um, let me know when y'all are ready.
Good to go over here.
Okay. You're good, Kim?
Yep.
Okay. So that's not bad. Uh, 7:34. Um, welcome to the DPECF, uh, second ever livestream event. The first one was, was a couple of Saturdays ago with our, um, uh, three candidates for governor. And now we have two great candidates running for school board in Brevard County, uh, Erin Dunn and Kim Huff. And, uh, we are excited that, um, like for just our first mere mortals, not non-governor candidates. We've got, uh, Erin and, and Kim to be here. Um, so I'm Scott Hodenstein, the president of the caucus. I'll kind of be moderating this, um, but it's really just a get to know you session for Erin and Kim. And to introduce them to everyone on Facebook. Um, we also have, uh, DPECF board member Stephanie Vanos, who's going to be in the background. You could wave or say hi Stephanie. She's monitoring Facebook for us and she's about to put the donation link to these great candidates, um, on, on the event. So we're going to do that a lot because it's really up to everyone who's out there watching us live and then watching the replays to, to learn how great Erin and Kim are. And then with one click, um, one donation goes to both these candidates and our caucus. And, uh, all three of us, two candidates in the caucus will be doing outstanding work before the, uh, August primaries. So I'm going to try to shift this up and highlight, um, and let, let's see if this works. I got Erin and Kim. So you, you're the star attractions. We've got you highlighted for the livestream. Um, um, Erin, we'll start with you. Um, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Thank you, Scott. Um, hi, everybody on Facebook. Uh, my name is Erin Dunn. I live in Brevard County, Florida, have been here for, let's see, 12 or 13 years. I'm not exactly sure. Um, so I'm a mom to a 10-year-old, uh, son who attends Brevard Public Schools. My husband actually is an employee of Brevard Public Schools down here. And I have been a public school teacher in the state of Florida for 13 years, 11 of those in Brevard Public Schools. And, uh, so here I am. Um, I know we're going to talk a little bit more about exactly why we're running later, but, um, aside from that, I love Disney. I love teaching music. This background is my virtual piano lesson studio. So I decided I'd turn the lights on since I was sitting here anyway. And, uh, yeah, that's a little bit about me.
Awesome. Um, Kim, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, I am also running for school board in Brevard County in District Five. So Erin and I are not in competition with each other. Um, I am a founding member of Families for Safe Schools. I am currently the vice president of the board of that, um, nonprofit. I have two children, nine and 12, that go to Brevard Public Schools. And, um, in a former life, I used to be an architect until I had kids. And I left my career to become a full-time mom and volunteer extraordinaire.
Did you have a good Mother's Day?
Yes.
Uh, you should I not ask? I'm like, oh, okay.
I got a coupon. I got a coupon from my 12-year-old for a car wash. So, um, he and I did that event together and it went well. That was the best thing that happened yesterday.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I should know better than ask, uh, without prepping. Erin, was your Mother's Day okay at least?
It was good. I got some chocolate and some tulips are my favorite flower. So got some of those sitting in the kitchen. And, um, yeah, life is good.
Yeah, I, I kind of feel bad for my wife. Um, she's, she's a member of the caucus. She's a school counselor here in Hillsborough. Um, it's kind of good news, bad news. The good news was we spent the weekend in New Orleans at Jazz Fest. So we've been out of pocket for a couple of days, but we spent most of the day on the road coming home yesterday. And our two boys, um, one is graduating high school this year and the older one is going to finish up at Florida Tech, which is, uh, out your way. Um, they actually hit the road to go to my niece's graduation from Flagler. So unfortunately my wife didn't have her, um, two younger boys. Um, I guess she still mothers me, but she didn't. For first time in, in 18 years or 21 years that, uh, she didn't have her, uh, her sons around. So, but, uh, they're supporting our niece. So that, that, that was good news.
I feel like Jazz Fest is a pretty great Mother's Day trip though, I have to say.
Yes. Uh, we, 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 we had a good time. Uh, the, the best thing is all the local, um, groups and musicians that you get to meet. And, uh, there were two in particular we, we really liked and bought their CD. And yeah, but, uh, enough about Jazz Fest. Um, um, why are you running? I, I don't know who wants to take that first. We could ping pong or, or snake it back and forth. Um, um, Kim, do you want to go first this time? Why are you running for school board?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, well, starting Families for Safe Schools last year really kind of catapulted me into this position that I didn't know I needed to do. Um, I got a very fast and furious education in all things happening at our district level. And I became very concerned about a lot of the things, um, we're seeing that is coming from our state legislation and our local, um, politics that are affecting our schools and our kids. And I'm really passionate to be standing up for our students and our teachers.
Okay. Awesome. Um, Erin, what, why are you running?
Um, so last year, I would say in 2020, um, similar to Kim, actually, I ended up at some school board meetings because I was concerned with different things in our schools. Um, in particular, I think the first school board meeting I spoke at may have been, uh, last spring, well, recently, um, we had some LGBTQ students, um, attending a school board meeting. And we found out that some community members were going to come out to protest against them. And so I went just to be a barrier between some of the protesters and our students. And I was at the time a teacher and, um, I was appalled at what I saw happening. And when it came to this fall, I spoke at some more school board meetings and felt like someone needed to step up on behalf of all of our students and all of our families. Um, I actually said no for a number of months because I was trying to leave space for, I don't know. I thought to myself, maybe, uh, is there someone more qualified? You know, I knew that I had teaching experience, but maybe there's someone who had political experience or someone who, um, knew more than me, um, at the time. But what I came to realize over the, the next few months is that, um, my teaching experience was valuable when it comes to having a say in what is happening in our schools. And similar to Kim, that's why I'm in, uh, that's why I'm running for school board is because I feel like I can stick up on behalf of our teachers. I can stand up on behalf of our teachers, um, and maybe not speak for them, but I know them. You know, they're my, my best friends in the district are teachers. And so I feel like I can be their voice. Um, I truly believe that all of our children matter, every single child in our school and every single family. And I felt like in my district, which is District Two in Brevard County, there was nobody running. I have three opponents. And none of them were running on a platform that I believe is best for all of our students and all of our families, um, and all of our teachers. And so that's why I decided to step up and run.
You, you know, that's awesome. Um, when, when I talk to a lot of the members, um, in, in our caucus and Stephanie could vouch, uh, if necessary, um, a lot of the times we're at board meetings, we're at general membership meetings. We talked to a lot of candidates across the state and, um, you know, I keep telling people, don't look for the Calvary to come over the hill. We are the Calvary. You, you, you're, you're the person coming over the hill to help. Um, there, there's no one else. So I, I think, um, you know, having that experience of seeing what was going on. Um, uh, for me, like my whole process leading to becoming the president of this caucus, I started out running for school board and it was kind of funny. I would do a lunch bunch with students. And like, we would look at current events and in the school board and, um, you know, not the board, but the district. I'd be like, you know, if, if I gave you guys the power to make this decision, you'd do better. You know, I should, yeah, you know, and they're like, you should run, Mr. H. I was a civics teacher. I'm like, yeah. You, you know, it, don't look for anyone else. We're, we're the solution. And, and I, I know from personal experience, what a big step that is to, to actually run and, and put yourself out there. And especially given some of the dynamics in Brevard County, um, that comes at a personal cost. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Um, I'm talking too much. So, so I gotta ask another question of y'all. Um, you, uh, both of you listed some issues about why you're running, uh, but a lot of it is, you know, we gotta make things better. So if you had a top two, top three issues that you're running on, um, you know, three things, two things that you would specifically fix, um, what would that be? And probably I need to ping pong on this because I don't want Kim taking all the good answers or Erin taking all the good answers. So, um, Erin, you go first, then Kim, and then, and then we could probably be here all night addressing all the important issues. But if we need to, we, we could cut it off, but go ahead, Erin.
Um, so I would say that an issue that's really important to me, incredibly important to me, and one of the reasons I stepped up, like I said before, is making sure that all of our students and our families are, um, that the diversity they bring to our schools is not just tolerated, but celebrated. So to me, that means that our students are represented in our school curriculum and in our school libraries. And that children can find families like theirs, um, within the books in our school libraries and, um, in that their families are represented. Um, combining with that, I think that right now, you know, when you look at politics, we have this divide between people going after teachers and parents. And sometimes it seems so divisive, right? But I feel like we have to bring families and parents together, you know, because I've been, um, like I said, a teacher in the schools for 13 years, an elementary music teacher. And so my entire career has been spent bridging the gap between parents and teachers. I would never have been able to put on, you know, performances with my students without parents learning how to tune violins and, uh, helping with costumes and literally running, you know, backstage during my shows. And if you live in Brevard County, please reach out to parents and families that I've worked with because they will stay the same. Um, we always made it work. And so I guess, um, overall is that our families are welcomed into our schools, but that we have a balance, that our teachers are respected in the classrooms, our families are involved. And that, you know, at the end of the day, we're doing all of this for our kids, right? For all of our children. And so to me, it's that we work together and that we have this balance and that everybody is part of the conversation.
Okay. So that's one. We'll go to Kim from the, you, you, you almost took us down the rabbit hole of math textbooks. What, we could come back to that. Um, um, yeah, but, uh, go, go ahead, Kim. What, what?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree that that is one of the most important, um, aspects of, um, what I would also say is really important as a school board member, if I am elected. I think it's so important to bring back the, the love for our teachers, right? The respect for our teachers, the, the trust of our teachers. It's something that many of us have not lost. Um, but through the political dynamic of, of what's happening in the state and around us, our teachers have been abused. I mean, I, I don't want to be using a word that's too excitable, but they're being abused and they, they don't feel valued. They, and it's not just about money. Obviously I would love to say that we could raise all of our teacher salaries to the national average, but the state has made that impossible for school boards to do because of the way that they have, um, strictly prohibited the way that teachers are, um, compensated. So I would do everything in my power to find a way to make those things happen. But also, um, I, I want our, our families to partner with our teachers again, to be helpful to our teachers, to respect our teachers when they're talking about, um, our students because they really do have the best interest of all of our kids at hand. This is, um, a thankless job. Um, I have been in every classroom that my children have attended with the exception of the year 2020. And I can say from that perspective and from working with teachers through PTOs and PTAs that our teachers do everything possible to teach and nurture our kids' hearts and minds. And, um, if we want to get talking into some of our legislative issues, um, indoctrination is not something that I would have ever labeled what our teachers do, um, as part of their jobs.
You, you know, I think one of my favorite memes going around Facebook or Twitter is, you know, hey, parents of teachers could really indoctrinate your kids. We'd get them to like sit in their chair and pay attention and turn their homework in.
Yes.
You, you know, um, you, you mentioned something and, and I was still in the classroom when, um, the pandemic started. And I remember like that, that last quarter that was done virtual and how much love and outpouring of respect that teachers got that quarter. Um, why do you think that was? I've got a theory, but, but either Erin or Kim, what, what do you think was why the teachers were held up right when schools were shut down? And then we'll circle back about why that changed. But why did people love teachers so much two years ago?
I was, oh, sorry. Go ahead. I was going to speak from a parent's perspective solely because I, I was not a teacher. Um, and I found out in spring of 2020, why I am not a teacher, especially to my own children, is that teaching your own, own children is a gift. Um, and we were in a very stressful time, add in teacher, child, um, fourth grade math, um, in the way that you did not learn math. And it was, it was a stressful time for parents to try to keep our children. We didn't really know what was going to happen next. And I think it was a moment in time where we just really appreciated all the things our teachers did as we tried to navigate through, um, virtual or packets of homework. Um, so I would say that parents got a dose of what it was like to have to try and educate their own children. And if you haven't homeschooled your child, it, it's a lot. And I would, so that's my mom perspective, parent perspective, that, um, it was an appreciation for everything they do from watching it happen from the, in our own home.
So what do you think, Erin?
Um, oh, I agree completely. As a parent who was doing third grade math at the time, um, I, I felt the same way as Kim. And you know, what I think people saw, Scott, because I was in the classroom at the time as well. Um, I think people saw how good teachers are at making things work. I think that every day teachers have to improvise and have altered schedules and have students with behavior difficulties and are, are, you know, differentiating their curriculum between, you know, 20 or 30 students. And every day, teachers make it work in their classrooms. And so I think parents got to see just a little bit of that. And even though we were virtual and things might not have been, you know, the easiest, that so many teachers were able to still try and build community or still teach, you know, in this crazy world, even though they might have been worried about their family members or sick themselves, um, they made it work. And so I think that, that appreciation, appreciation, you know, came from just seeing what teachers do well, seeing how well teachers, um, can adapt and, and how much they care for our kids, you know, how much they truly do, um, love their students.
You, you know, my, my perspective and depending, you know, I put it in different ways, but you, you know, I thought that, that the parents were learning what you do all this with our kids for like that eight-hour period, you know? And I think there's a lot of, um, you know, respect and a lot of insight into what teachers have to do. What do you think has changed though? Cause now there's a lot of talk about teachers are indoctrinating. They're grooming, they're, they're talking about things we don't want them to talk about. Um, you, you know, what, so, so what do you think has changed?
I think there have been a lot of false narratives put out about what actually happens in our schools and what happens in our classrooms. I think there are, um, organizations and there are politicians who are putting out lies about what truly happens in our schools. And I think a lot of people are trying to villainize teachers and some of our students and some of our families by taking, um, maybe one individual instance or even a completely false instance and turning that into trying to make that the reality of what actually happens in our schools. I think it starts there.
Yeah, Brevard was the story, right? Where the kid was forcibly masked and the, the pictures were taken and turned out the pictures were staged. Um, yeah.
Well, it did happen. The pictures were staged in the, and the direction of the actual, um, Down Syndrome Foundation was what those teachers did. And, you know, it, it was shocking to hear the new story before adding the information into it. And so that narrative has stuck that, that teachers abused that child. Um, but the police report and the investigation did, did prove that those teachers did not harm that child. They were not malicious and there was no crime committed. I think what happened around the turn of, in the middle of the school year 2020 to, um, 2021 was that, um, you watched politics change, um, where there were, were people who were kind of on the fringe of saying that masks didn't work, where we don't need masks, um, masks are a way to control people. This, this narrative is what started this turmoil with our schools. And I've watched, I went back and watched every school board meeting in 2020 through 2021. And then the other ones I've been at, um, if I haven't been there, I've watched them all. And you, when you watch them like that, kind of like when you binge watch a series, you can see how this tide began to really change and snowball. And, um, it was the same people at meetings every two weeks saying the same things about masks. Then it rolled into the LGBTQ issues and CRT kind of started to bundle into those things. And, and really what it amounted to is it felt like, um, the T, the, the school board started to get tired of listening to it. Quite honestly, there was no counter voice. And when I started Families for Safe Schools with the other parents that began that group, we all had watched that happen. And it was very clear to us how we needed to have a representative voice in our school board meetings so that people, not just the school board, because they were getting our emails, but so that people saw on those school board meetings that there were people who didn't believe those things, that, um, rejected those false narratives, like I want to call them lies because that's really truly what it is. Um, but I do believe some people really believe those narratives. So, um, so yes, it was, it was a political change, um, in what was happening and it affected our schools. And so there's one group of people who made this a political issue. And, and now we're dealing with the aftermath of all of that, as we've seen coming from the state all the way down to every aspect of our local politics in this county.
You, you know, I think, um, one of the things, um, I hear a lot is one side divides us to conquer. While, you know, our side, um, tries to unite to build something. And I think the assault, the division, um, all these issues, it, it's just got people exhausted. I think the parents were exhausted from, you know, be, you know, just, um, you know, maybe losing a job during the pandemic or trying to work from home while you're trying to help teach your kid from home. And, um, you, you know, the number of decisions teachers made, now parents were doing that. And, and they got exhausted and they became vulnerable. I think teachers are utterly exhausted. Um, you know, every time I go into sub, um, you know, it's like, I almost feel like I'm propping someone up physically just to get them, uh, through the day. So, um, yeah, I, I, I think the, 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 the division is just literally exhausting and, and people are on their kind of last, last nerve. Um, I wanted to make a pitch while we have a pause here. Um, anyone out in Facebook land, if you're, um, following along, um, hit the donate link. If you have a particular question, Stephanie is monitoring. And, uh, if she gets a question, um, she could break in and, and ask that. So we can be interactive. Just because you're not on the Zoom with us, um, drop your questions into Facebook and, and, and we could, uh, get back to you. Um, so, so that, that was a lot and, and we, we only covered two issues. You know, all students celebrate their diversity and let's bring back the love for teachers. Um, Erin, I think it's your turn for the next issue, i- if you have one.
Oh, I sure do. Um, actually, um, it's funny because it bounced from me to Kim about
Funny because it bounced from me to Kim about teachers. My second issue was actually teachers. Um, so if you don't mind, I'll just go on about that for just a second. So. The saddest part of how things are going to me right now is that I see our very experienced teachers. Who may have otherwise, you know, lasted another five years in the classroom or something like that, who are choosing to retire now. And those teachers with that experience are absolute gold. What they can do for one child, what they can do for an entire classroom of children, how they can mentor, not only like first year teachers, but any. Their entire team. Um, and so I think the hardest thing for me right now is um. Watching those teachers feel like. They are so under attack. They are being accused of, you know, like we said, indoctrinating children. What they're able to teach is being so limited, you know, lesson plans that they've had for years that are good for kids that um. Teach such important things, um books that they've used in their classroom. That are, you know, possibly even being taken off off of the shelves before a thorough review has been done. We have these teachers who are throwing their hands up and saying, I'm done. This is too much. And so um. I guess my second point is that we. Need to remember that teachers are not just people who show up in classrooms, you know? Teachers are educators who have gone to college, you know, they have gotten degrees, they are experts in their field. And so. Like Kim was saying, um. With all of the mandates that have come down from the state, especially all the unfunded mandates that have come down from the state. And how Tallahassee and our governor um and the Department of Education has tried, has has. Mandated exactly how so much of the money that's sent to each district is used. It's a huge challenge to work on teacher pay, but I will tell you that today our district met with our teachers union. And I was teaching at the time, but I will be going back right after this and watching. Exactly what they were talking about and uh just last week, actually. Uh, Kim and I both met with a financial professional to sit down and go through our district budget and see if we could find money. Because we understand that these are experts in our classrooms who. Need to be respected and one of those ways is through teacher pay, you know? But I will say that. In speaking to teachers, you know, I've been keeping a running list on my phone when I speak to teachers and students and parents of what are your biggest concerns? And so over the last few months, I have been keeping a running list. And the number one thing that I've heard from teachers is respect. Is that they are having disrespect in their classrooms by students like they've never, you never had before. That they have at times parents coming into the school and screaming at them. And so. In addition to working on better pay for teachers, um I believe that we need. Not only for teachers, but for all of our professionals who work in our schools, we need to work within the district and with our administrators. To instill that respect back in our schools. From a parental level, between colleagues, from the students. I think that COVID was very hard for a lot of children. And I think that it's going to take a lot, but I think um. When we talk about things like taking social emotional learning out of the classroom, I think that's the exact opposite of what we need to be doing. You know, our children need that support. And. I think that can only be better for our teachers and for our kids. And so um reestablishing. That our teachers have that respect in the classroom and that we 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 respect them as experts. In more than, more than one way, um is definitely a really important, important thing for me. Um, I also, the last thing I'll say about that is, um, I actually met with our school superintendent before. I decided to run. And I said, is there a place for school board members to advocate at the state level? Like, what is the, what is the place there? Because. This this pay thing has to change. The lack of funding for education has to change. And so my hope is that. You know, as I'm elected to the school board, that our school districts can work together. And advocate at the state level for funding for education. Because just because there's a, you know, slight lift in education doesn't mean we're caught up with where we used to be by any stretch of the imagination. And so I think that there's a huge place for all of us around the state. To advocate and work together um on behalf of our teachers and on behalf of our schools and our kids.
You you you're like teeing me up, Erin. I I I, oh, I'm like, oh, I gotta share the stats. Um, the the the, for everyone out there listening and Kim, if you're about to recite all this, um, I apologize. The budget this year, state budget went up ten point four percent. But per pupil funding only went up four point nine six percent. So we didn't even get a full slice of the larger pie. Teacher pay in the last decade, down seven point four percent in inflation adjusted dollars, worst in the nation. Everyone's saying record level of funding this year. Well, not in inflation adjusted dollars. We're still um a- about. Thirteen percent behind where we were fifteen years ago. And if we're talking about um Florida, if Florida were its own country. We have the seventeenth largest economy in the world. And yet we are thirty three percent below national average in in education funding. So, yeah. Um, I also have to say. Uh, I was a teacher of the year finalist in Hillsborough County um two years ago, three years ago now. Um, so three years ago, there were five finalists in Hillsborough County. Four of the five have left the profession. One is now doing admit administrative stuff up in Tallahassee. Um, one retired. I left the profession. I sub, I advocate, but I'm not a full-time teacher. Two uh of the teachers. Were promoted to APs but have since left education completely because of everything you talked about. Yeah, so Kim, did you want to touch on that or add another issue?
I would like to say that um, that's been. As part of like my supporting the teachers um cause, which I'm really, I'm I'm really passionate about. Is that I've talked to teachers, hundreds of teachers. Um, I can't talk to enough teachers. And really, every single one of them says the same thing. Yes, money is important, but they're not even leaving fully because of the money. They're tapped out and leaving and it's not the students, it's the parents. They cannot. Handle being villainized any longer. And. I know lots of parents who are really supportive, so I can't imagine the emails, the phone calls. Um, and the discussions that they've had to have. Um, out of earshot. That are forcing them out of the profession entirely. And we're talking about people who, whether it's been twenty years or five years. Every single um. Teacher has said the same thing. It's the few loud parents that have made teaching unbearable. To the point of they want to do anything else and they feel terrible for wanting to leave the kids. And that is heartbreaking. You know, as a parent who has had good relationships with all of my kids' teachers, I. I it makes me sad to know of about all the good teachers that we're losing. Because of uh the dynamic that has just shifted.
Yeah, um. I feel that uh some some days I feel guilty that I'm not still in the classroom um. Trying to help students when when I sub, you know, I do my best. I talked to a lot of former students. In fact, we're gonna have a program with me and a former student on Thursday. Um, that talks about the Don't Say Gay Bill. Um, and and. Yeah, pe- people don't understand uh uh. Or or if they do, they only understand a little bit of how undersaged teachers feel. Um, okay, we're starting to get some questions on Facebook. Stephanie, do you want me to ask or are you gonna hop on and and ask? Because you're looking at it um um directly.
Sure, I can ask. Um, this question is from Jabari and he says, how do you balance parental rights with parental overreach? Good question.
Who who's gonna go first?
I was gonna let Erin answer that first because Jabari is my counterpart at. Um, but do you want to go first, Erin?
No, go ahead. You go for it. I'm happy he asked it.
I want to hear exactly the wording one more time.
Sure, that um, his question is, how do you balance parental rights versus parental overreach?
So. I mean, I think that's kind of a, it's it's kind of depends on how much someone can tolerate, right? So I think that parental rights have been something I never needed a piece of paper. From Governor DeSantis to tell me what I had over my children. I have been an involved parent. I have known what is going on. That has been a luxury that I've had. That I've been able to be in their classrooms. Um, when I haven't been able to be in their classrooms over the last year or so and in the beginning of this last year when I kept them home. Because I was not ready for them to be in a classroom without without masks required. I kept very good con- like communication open with their teachers. So I still was very aware of what was happening. And so when people think or when people say that they haven't had a voice or they haven't had a seat at the table. For the things that are happening in their schools, I I question the validity of that. And and I'm sure there are teachers who don't communicate. I've had teachers who are amazing with my children and. We haven't really maybe made a connection and and that's understandable. But if my kids love their teacher and and they're learning. Um, I still like respect that teacher, that they're doing what they need to do for my child. I would say the overreach happens when you question their abilities. And I I don't think there's anything wrong with questioning a teacher um when you have problems. I don't think there's anything wrong with sending an email, making a phone call, talking to administrators. I feel that we've reached a point where um people have been encouraged to have the school board meetings. Become their first point of contact with their grievances of something that's happened in a child's school. And not always, but um overreach, I think, happens when. When parents think they know more than everyone else, that's part of the system that's trying to literally. Educate their child. I would actually say parental rights actually give you parental responsibilities. And that's, the responsibility part has been ignored while the rights have been claimed.
I taught that in civics, rights have responsibilities. Erin, I'll let you go and then I wanted to, I I have a little insight I'd like to share as well, but go go ahead, Erin.
Overreach from any angle is not productive, right? So. I think that you can have parental involvement. That is fantastic for kids. And I do think parents have rights, you know, on behalf of their children. In this past fall, I wanted to know something about my son's uh language arts, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, language arts curriculum. And I went to the school district website. I found his grade. I pulled it up and had exactly. Like right on my computer in like ten minutes, exactly what he was learning in the classroom. So I think that a lot of those, I think what Kim said was actually right, you know? Responsibilities come with those rights and we have a lot of those rights already. Um, maybe people don't know. Maybe they're not aware. Or again, maybe there's this false narrative that like we, you can't be involved, but you absolutely can. And so I think that, I think that. Absolutely, parents should have a huge say in what their children are doing, but. The line is where their opinions filter over or. When they try to control what other people's children are doing in our schools, right? So they may want something for their specific child, but that does not mean. That their opinion gets to take over the expertise of the teachers in the classrooms. So I think that um. I will say from from personal knowledge of with teacher friends of mine, that overreach where um. Someone might go over the head of a teacher. Now, I understand every once in a while, there could be like Kim said, you know, there are teachers who are not as good as at communication. And if. You've reached out to a teacher and you haven't had a response, like I absolutely understand going to administration for something for your children. But at the very base level, we have to be reaching out to each other, right? Teachers and parents and working together. And and when that works, it's amazing, right? That's how schools are supposed to work. When we both are respectful of each other and we both work on behalf of what's best for our kids. Then overreach doesn't need to be a thing, you know, we can have that balance. And I just think. I think that's important, that nobody should be reaching over the top. We should both be reaching towards each other, maybe, you know? In order for for it to work for the children.
Awesome. You 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 know, o- one of the things I always think about, just from my own experience in the classroom, like. I want to meet every single parent, like like. Um, and and I want to meet grandma and grandpa and siblings and. Um, sometimes that's possible, but when you're overstressed and overworked. When you have to give up a planning period to go cover someone else's class. Then you literally have no time to interact with parents and to build that relationship. You 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 know, a lot of people talk about the academic gap from from the pandemic. I I talk about relationship gaps. Um, whether it's students with other students or with their teachers or teachers and families. There just hasn't been the time to establish those relationships. He- here's the other thing, a- and you you know, I'll just throw this out there i- if you want to respond. Or um, uh, we we've got some more questions and I I've got one more, but. Um, I remember reaching out to um one of my students. And uh, this was right when the pandemic had started. And um, I hadn't heard back from her grandma yet. And then I eventually, after a couple of effort, you know, a couple of tries, got her on the phone. And she was in tears. Um, she had a elementary kid, a middle school kid and a high school kid, grandkids, I should say. You you know, mom and dad were now out of the picture somewhat, which was stressful just having that situation. But then with the pandemic and the lack of technology and grandma not understanding how to get involved. Um, you you know, I I it it, I literally had to walk her through things and then go visit the house. Which I don't think I was supposed to do at the time, but tha- that's what you had to do. Wha- what can we do for the families where? Um, you know, we talked about teachers not having time to engage. What about the families? Who want to be involved, but they're working three jobs or they don't have internet access or? Did, do you want to comment on that at all?
I'll say something really quickly, then I'll pass it to you, Kim. I think it's important that we, just like we talked about, you know, not. Assuming the worst of our teachers are villainizing our teachers. I think it's important to do the same thing with parents as well. You know, I think that families and parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and foster parents, you know. Have so much going on, especially, you know, in this semi-post-COVID world. That we also shouldn't assume that because a parent is not involved in their child's education that they don't care. Because I think that in many cases, they absolutely do. But circumstances may prevent them from getting involved, you know, all sorts of circumstances. And Scott, I agree with you completely that um. I lost my thought for a second. I think you were talking about um.
That that was a good statement right there. Done. You should talk to my wife. No.
I think, I think it was when you were talking about um. Reaching out to families, uh, you, I know what it was. You were talking about um. Teachers being so overworked that they're unable to build relationships. That's huge, because I'll tell you as a teacher. Who, you know, has taught me elementary music. So we have all of the kids in the school. So if there's a child that's none of with a specific behavior problem or is in the office. So if there's a child that's none of with a specific behavior problem or is in the office frequently, we teach that child every week, right? And so because you have every child, you have every child who might have a severe behavior issue. And when we can build relationships with those families ahead of time, before a behavior happens, it is such an easy phone call. And it's such a productive phone call with families to say, hey, what can we do? Did you have a bad night last night? This is what I tried. Talk, can you talk to your son or daughter about this when they get home? Like, having those relationships in place ahead of time makes it just makes everything else so much easier to deal with down the line.
Absolutely. Kim?
Um, I think that's that's a human.
Hey, Kim, you went on mute there.
They don't have anything left or they don't have the daytime hours when their kids are when their teachers are available. And so I I know from personal experience that the teachers do try to still accommodate that by by making themselves available in the evenings. And or anytime that that a parent can possibly interact with the teacher. But I do think there's there's a lot of room to come up with some better solutions to give those people who really like desperately would love to go on a field trip or be in a classroom for a special event. And they just absolutely cannot have time off from doing it. In this day and age of our technology and what we've realized, we can accomplish through that. It makes me wonder about some of the ways we could make that parent feel like they got to see it. And I know teachers are really also very good about taking photographs of students and sending them to parents. So but I I do think there's room to grow for all of our for our district to figure out how to make those connections for those parents.
Yeah, I know, at least in Hillsborough, I don't know how it is in Brevard. We have some schools in the poorer neighborhoods who don't even have PTAs because there's no money. So, hey, if there's any business owners listening in and you're from Brevard County, go help fund a PTA so that we can get those parents involved and and that will help. Okay, we are at eight twenty-six. So Stephanie has fed me a whole bunch of questions where we're almost in the lightning round. I've got one more question as well. Are y'all okay going a little past eight thirty? Yeah, okay. And Stephanie, if she hasn't done it in the last 30 seconds, she's posting the donation link because it's important to get these candidates elected. And the only way, unfortunately, to have to to get Erin and Kim elected is they need money to to do things. That's a whole separate Zoom. That's a whole separate topic, money in politics. But they don't need a lot. And but if you could split a donation, one click, we'll 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 get it to everyone. Okay, but the last question I had on my list was, do we have too much testing in schools? And what could you I know a lot of that is a state issue. What maybe could you do on school board to help alleviate that?
Yes, we have too much testing. I don't know currently with this administration what a school board can do about it because those are against state regulations. I think testing for students to be sure that they were on track started out as a, you know, one of those great things on paper, right? That sounds great. Let's see how we can track kids and see if they learned what they need to learn. And it has morphed into how we evaluate teachers. Again, like we're using it as a weapon to figure out. You know, there's so much pressure on our kids and our teachers to do well on these tests. We we can tell how good a school is or not based on these test scores. And it's it's become a monster that we need to slay and just completely start over. I don't know if we're going to get that with our new no end of the year, high stakes testing. I don't believe we are. I'll believe it, I guess, when I see it. But I think there that teachers again know how to evaluate students and know where they're at based on benchmarks that they're supposed to hit. And these state tests have done nothing but give everyone anxiety every year at the end of the year. And taking away tons of instructional hours.
Absolutely. I feel like all of this state level testing is just another way to undermine the expertise of our teachers. Just like Kim was saying, our teachers know what our students are supposed to learn. Not only that, they know how much of it they've learned and exactly what they know and they do not know. That's their job, you know? That's their job at day in and day out. They know the kids better than any test ever will. And so, well, I understand that there are reasons to regulate evaluations possibly or regulate what is taught in schools. You know, that's why we have things like scope and sequences. And that's why we have things like benchmarks. And at the end of the day, the teacher should be able to have that responsibility of reporting back where their students are. I can't begin to imagine how much more teachers could enjoy their jobs if they didn't have to worry about massive amounts of testing. And I can't begin to imagine how much students would like going to school more if they weren't sitting at computers, testing and testing and testing. So it's a huge issue. There's too much of it. And what can we do at a district level? I think listen to teachers and make sure that there is not unnecessary testing, that we're not implementing something that two things that are similar that may clash. But again, like Kim said, it is difficult to do when the state is mandating so much of it. And I guess our hope can be that we have some changes at the state level and within the State Department of Education that are better for our teachers and better for our kids when it comes to testing.
What I've seen and something that when y'all are elected, you might be able to help with in Brevard is, you know, if the the state says no more than 5% of the school year can be can be used for testing, well, that's nine school days. Well, if you just have a finals week, you know, at the end of first semester and second semester, that's 10 days. So it's not just the state testing, but then, you know, it's the final exams. There's AP tests. There's, you know, take the NAP. And then what always happens in my experience is the district wants to know how they're going to do before the state progress monitoring. So the district brings in their progress monitor. And then the teacher gets nervous because they're all uptight. So then they're doing their progress monitoring before the progress monitoring of the progress monitoring. And and you lose the actual instructional time. I think my last three years, I came to a realization, the last three or four years in the classroom, I stopped giving tests. I didn't give a test except for the district mandated semester exam and then the state mandated EOC. It was a high stakes test, seventh grade EOC. The last year that the scores counted, six of my students had perfect scores. Because I told them, I don't care about your test score. They're like, really? What if I fail? I'm like, you're not going to fail because, you know, you only need like 46% correct to pass and you could guess 25%. So you're not going to fail. Don't worry about it. And I had so much more instructional time and the kids weren't worried about it. And when they weren't worried about it, they did so much better. So, you know, if if we could, if districts held the line, unfortunately, there's a lot of money in test programs. And and unfortunately, testing is one way to monetize our our children. So, okay. So I have a whole bunch of questions off of Facebook that Stephanie has sent me. I might need, I don't have a timekeeper, but I probably might need to tell you only one minute or or we'll be here, you know, till 10:30, which is fine. We could keep streaming, but other people might tune out. So, um. Here's the first question. Now that we have the Stop Woke Bill and Don't Say Gay, do you think it's possible to teach Black history accurately at an age appropriate level? Who's going to buzz in first?
Yes, and they have been doing that all along. Next.
The misconceptions about what people think we're teaching in the classrooms is the worst part of all of this. And we have to ensure that we can teach Black history appropriately in our schools. End game, regardless of what's coming out of Tallahassee.
Yeah, I would show the video from the Pettis Bridge in Selma. And I wouldn't even have to, there you go. But you you're seeing what happened. Okay, next question. Do you think it's possible for LGBTQ plus students or LGBTQ plus households to feel accepted and have support in our schools?
I believe that it is, and I believe that we have to make sure that it is. The worst part of the legislation that has come out of Tallahassee lately is how hateful it is and how so many amendments have been thrown at these bills to make them less divisive and make them go towards maybe their initial intent. And we have to make sure that our LGBTQ students are included. I have a lot, I'm not going to go into now, but I have a lot of ideas for ways to make that happen and our LGBTQ teachers. I think that's that is incredibly important. All of our kids have to feel included and all of our kids have to feel respected and recognized. And it has to be and and celebrated, like I said earlier, for who they are and who their families are.
Agree. I mean, I would have just, the way that I would answer that is that we have to. Like, we just have to. We have to make those people, I mean, we have to make every single child feel accepted, loved and respected in our schools, period. So whatever challenge that is for anybody, whether it's a teacher or an administrator or a fellow parent, this has to, it has to be, we are not allowed to discriminate against people for any reason. And that is included. And so it just can't be tolerated, honestly.
Yeah, like Article Nine, Section One of the Florida Constitution literally says all children residing in the state of Florida, you know, get a, you know, efficient, high-quality, uniform, you know, public education. And one of the insights that I like talking about is Maslow, where if a kid's hungry, if they're homeless, if they don't feel safe at school, their safety needs aren't met, they're not accepted, they're not going to learn. And and that's the whole point. I'm going to plug on Thursday at 7:30. Our next program is actually going to be with one of my former students, Morgan, who I was catching up with. We had gone out to lunch. And she told me her story of how Don't Say Gay affected her. And I don't want to give too much away, but if you're out there, come back to our page at 7:30 and listen to Morgan's story. And it gets you right here. Yeah, okay. I think this has been addressed. It's probably yes or no. Is it possible to teach history accurately at all?
Absolutely. It's it's our job, right? It's in the benchmarks. It's in the curriculum. It's what our history teachers have to do.
Okay, what are your thoughts on dealing with socioeconomic inequality of students within Brevard schools? I think we started touching on this, but how do you deal with socioeconomic inequalities?
I think, again, this is another one of those places where we need, we can do better. We have a lot of community organizations that have partnered with Brevard Public Schools to provide extra services for our students and families that are in lesser socioeconomic status. And our schools, which shocked me when I heard this statistic, I was like, that can't be true. But it is. Over half of our students receive free or reduced lunch. And that gives a really good picture of what our county faces when we talk about socioeconomic hurdles for kids and families. And so we need to make sure that we meet, like you said, the to meet those kids' needs, whether it's that they they're homeless, they're hungry. You know, they didn't sleep well last night because their parents were maybe arguing about something like, there's so many things that we need to like address in a child's life before they're capable of learning anything. And so one of the greatest examples is Endeavor School here, which is a community school. And watching that program work so quickly in a four-year period, the turnaround that's happened, I think it's inspiring to see that there are things that work. And I think the goal would be to make those things work in more schools.
Yeah, I agree completely, Kim. I was actually going to talk about Endeavor as well. It's one of our local schools, like Kim said, that has a community program where they address everything from, they have social workers coming in to work with families. And they have everything from, you know, washing machines available to families to dental services and medical services, you know, at the school, not just for the kids, you know, for the families as well. And I think that we have many more schools that could benefit from that and many more families who could just breathe, you know, when they knew that their kids' medical needs and dental needs were being taken care of. So I agree. I think that I think that equity is the issue for me, that we have to make sure that families of a lower socioeconomic status are receiving the help they need for their kids to succeed, just like other children in our district. You know, I've taught at three very different schools with families across the whole socioeconomic realm. Three, like right up and down the socioeconomic ladder. And I will say that schools that are comprised of higher socioeconomic families, they have so many programs. They have parents in there all day, every day, who do so many things. And so if we can get some of those volunteers, I know there's a push right now to restart mentoring in our schools. But if we can take some of those amazing parent volunteers who have the time and have the ability to volunteer, and if we can take some businesses and and we already have some great community organizations, if we can really filter that and build programs in our schools that really need to be supported, I think that that could be fantastic for our kids.
Yeah, I would love every, I'm a huge fan of the community school model to to begin with, but leveraging business contacts, especially like minority business owners who are just an example, you know, for for the community, that would be an awesome idea. And the other thing which I've never understood, and I did this a little bit, a little bit with student government at my old school, is every senior center, every assisted living facility should have a school partner where the kids go visit the the residents or the residents could come in and and read and 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 just, you know, that that's just, you know, retirees. We have plenty of them in Florida looking for stuff to do. So, you know, hey, here's schools. Yeah, okay, I think there was, I'm I'm I'm. Um, okay, I think there was, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at my notes. Um. Stephanie, did I get all the questions?
Uh, yeah, I sent you all of them. So I think so.
Okay, um. Okay, Moms for, uh, he- here's last one and then, and then we'll wrap up. Um, Moms for Liberty consistently and incorrectly cite CRT as the cause of underperforming students. Now, now I gotta be honest, I'm not sure I um understand this term. Can either of you talk about intergroup contact theory? And how to implement that? Do, do either of you know what that means? I do not. I would have to ask for clarification. You're, you're on mute, Kim.
Intergroup contact theory?
Yeah.
Hmm. I, I am not familiar with that term. Um. I mean, I'm very familiar with CRT and we are not teaching that in our schools. Our teachers um have had some training that has been called CRT. And I don't believe that even the training is truly critical race theory. Um. Everything has been, I mean, the mention of the word race has now been equated with critical race theory. They have also um made up their own vocabulary list of things that equal critical race theory, and it's just not true. Um, diversity, equity and inclusion is not cr- critical race theory. It has nothing to do with critical race theory. It has to do with real life and um how our world is diverse. And there are issues where we need to address equity. And inclusion is just, I mean, it's just, again, another part of the world we live in. Um, if people were talking about not including children with um disabilities, for whatever reason, it would blow up. So we are, we, we need to be inclusive about every child ha- you know, has the equal right and equity and we meet their equity issues and we um and we embrace it and we celebrate it. And so I'm not really sure what, um, I would love to have you shoot that, that question maybe in the chat so that I can look it up. I'm kind of guessing um, what it could mean, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna guess because I could be totally wrong.
And, and, and I think Stephanie did the work and we'll have this on Facebook and follow up. I wrote it down in my notes. There's a uh, there, there's an article that Stephanie found. So whoever asked that in Facebook land, we, we will get back to you. We, we won't forget. Um, you know, you, you could message any of us or um we'll, we'll try to answer in um, uh, i- i- you know, in the live stream chat, we a- any of us can go back and, and respond to that question after the fact. Um, okay, so let me, let, let me give you all a chance to wrap up, maybe a minute or two. Um, remind everyone who you are, what you're running for, when the election is. Um, Stephanie, if you could drop the donation link. Um, I, I, I think I've mentioned donation link and please donate to these wonderful candidates. But um, we'll also drop the links to their websites and Facebook pages. So um uh, I don't know, who, who'd I make go first last time? Okay, so Kim, do you, do you wanna wrap up first uh now?
I'm Kim Huff. I'm running for Brevard County School District Five School Board. And um, we do have some, Families for Safe Schools have the meet, the candidate event in the northern part of Brevard. I do not know the details off the top of my head, but if you go to um, the Families for Safe Schools website, um, it's familiesforsafeschools.com. Um, all of our event information is in there and that's a really great place to just meet candidates that um we support from that organization. Um, so that's that side of my hat. And then my other side of my hat would be, um, go to my website, Huff, H O U G H, the number four, schools.com. You can contact me. You can find out more about anything that's happening and as far as like my um my issues, what I feel, how I feel about things. And also there's a donate button. We do need money to reach every voter in the district to be sure they know who I am and what I stand for.
Okay, Erin, go ahead and uh give us your wrap up, please. You're, you're, uh, I do not hear you, but it doesn't look like you're on mute.
Is that better?
Now you're good.
Okay, so Kim, Sunday for Families for Safe Schools at noon. Does I cur- I believe so, twelve o'clock. Um, and so it's at Larry Schultz Park in Rockledge, um, off of Levitt Parkway. Um. If the time is wrong, someone text us and we'll, we'll fix it. Um, so um to wrap up, let's see. I would just say to everyone, be sure
Who, who, who are you and what are you running for?
So my name is Erin Dunn. I am running for uh Brevard County School Board District Two. Not against Kim in a different area. Um, my website is erindunnforschools.com. So E R I N D U N N E, the number four, schools.com. Um, you can also find me on Facebook, Instagram and things like that. But if you go to the website, we can link you over to all that fun stuff. Um, and I would just say that this year it is so important to get out and vote, especially in elections that don't take place in November. Of course, November is important, but our school board election is August twenty-third. Um, Kim has one opponent currently, so that her election will be decided in August. Um, and mine could be with fifty percent of the vote plus one, even though I have three opponents. And now is, it's incredibly important, I would say, to make sure you research the people you're considering voting for. Because many people can speak about lots of things, but when you find out who they're aligned with and um it might change your mind, you know, organizations that you might see behind the scenes. Um, so I would say it's a very important year to do your research. Um, and it's a very important year to make sure you get out to vote and help us support all of our kids in our schools.
Well, Erin and uh Kim, thank you um so much for agreeing. You, you, you are our first Facebook Live uh candidate forum. Um, thank you for volunteering to be the Guinea pigs. I, I think it went great. Um. Um, I want to remind everyone of some future events that the Democratic Public Education Caucus of Florida is, is having. So um, this Thursday, May twelfth, um, we're gonna livestream with my former student, Morgan. And she's gonna tell her story about don't say gay. Um, believe me, you will want to listen to that. Um, on May eighteenth, we're gonna have two great Hillsborough County candidates, uh, Demaris Allen and Karen Perez. And then on May twenty-third, we're actually gonna have the Orange County School Board, um uh, probably a more formal roundtable with uh four candidates. Um, two in uh two different races. So um, that's gonna be more of a town hall official format than um, than just kinda getting out and, and promoting some great candidates like we did tonight. So I think Stephanie is gonna drop our, our website. Um. If, if you're watching this, you're on our Facebook page already. And the donation link, that's gonna be the absolute last thing that um I, I'm gonna ask for. Um, it, it is so important. Uh, as a former candidate, uh, I know how hard it is to ask other people for money. So I'm asking you for them. I'm, I'm much better asking for money for other people tha- than me um, tha- than I was for myself, but if it's twenty bucks, donate twenty bucks. Um, be a monthly donor. And, and even more importantly, you, you know, volunteer, if you like what you heard, host a house party, you know, invite some friends over. Um, all the, the message, all the polling, um. You know, people get their news from the internet or TV, but the people they trust most are family and friends. So go talk up Erin, go talk up Kim, let people know where you could find them online. Um, talk about the issues and, and if we do enough of that, they're gonna win and they're gonna do great things for uh students. So uh, I'm gonna sign off from uh Facebook and um um, if Erin and Kim, you could hang out just a little bit, um, after we stop the livestream, I would appreciate that. So uh, thank you, everyone. Have a good night and uh take care.